All right, let's start the board meeting even though we're not all there. Let's start with the pledge of allegiance and change allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I want to welcome these groups of media and do we have any comments? Do you want me to come up there?
Yes.
Okay. Speaking of the campers, some of you taught some material at work. It does concern because the change is very great on our scanners related to religious holiday. First, I'm actually wanting to put my children out because actively group. We gathered the last thing before we go up to spring break. And I need to get that parent because they're going to be gone. And I've heard from a lot of parents actually, it's like, how many filters on the website you said was approved? So I'm really encouraging us to lay their hands next year so that those of us who don't want people over to turn off.
Thank you.
All right, let's move to the approval of consent agenda, beginning with the approval of the revised agenda. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All right, let's move on to the approval of the meeting minutes. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any approval of accounts payable? I think so. I believe so. Need a balance sheet. Second. All right, now discussion.
On page twenty-eight. And then number four to see if there's money coming to the shoe.
Okay.
The bill of cards, is that going to be a problem with the mileage or something?
No, this is a hundred. We're not, that's just a hundred is your part or not my part because it's the end of somebody's account value. Anything else? All in favor, say aye. All right, we go to recognition, state west. Oh, sorry. Now we have the most important thing. All right, now discussion. All right, all in favor, say aye. Recognition, state west. Talk about Europe, tell us about.
Sure, we're thinking that. You have had a point.
Congratulations. Congratulations, I have some things for you. State bowlers.
Nope. Musical chairs.
Mrs. Adler, Mrs. Berger, will you come up and talk about the Iowa reading?
Do you want to go?
Sure. Well, these, we had thirteen entries placed as a state competition for the Iowa Reading Association writing contest. This year was a great success for us. The local contest is sponsored by the Lee County Chapter of Iowa Reading Association. Barb is our chairperson for the writing contest. And then our first place entries can pick up to move on to the state competition. And then we'll read who the students and what they got at state.
And we have a ceremony for them that most of them attended. And at that point, they read their story or their poem. And there is a program at the state levels that enters first, visits first place or either to that.
First place entries that won at state will be recognized at the state Iowa Reading Association conference, which is in June, I believe June twenty-sixth. Okay, so we'll go ahead and read our entry winner. So poetry, Ryan McDonald got first place in the state. Congratulations, Ryan. And London Mueller is not here, but she was our first grade and she also got first place at state. And second grade Amelia Marshall got second place at state for her poem.
Okay, and then sixth, sixth grade Claire received third place for her poem. Our Mattson, Mattson got first place for her story in ninth grade. Dre Mutti and Susanna Olson are both not here, but Susanna got second place for her story and Dre got third place for her poem. Oh, Emma Evans in eighth grade got first place too, sorry. Okay, she had soft words.
And then for a story for the younger kids, Ryan got first place also for his story. Ellen Smith received first place at state for her story. And Amelia received second place for her story. And Christine Conchrin is third grade and she got first place at state. And the fourth grade Emma Cole was also first place. And then I know a fifth grader who's not here tonight, but she received second place for her story, that's Eunice Jelling.
We don't have all of our kiddos here, but this is at least a start. I'll have you guys start with who you guys are if you want. And do you guys can say what competition you competed in or not, maybe?
Or what the project was about, can we hear about that?
Yeah, so I'll just, I'll do the, some brief introduction. So it's state science fair, but high school is one day and the middle school is the second day. And there were two, over two hundred students that compete from the entire state with fifty schools. And a total of over sixty thousand dollars in prizes and scholarships and trips are given out. So it's a little lead in. So high schoolers, you guys are moving to add in and also do what you guys intersecting in or whatever.
We help judge the middle school students' projects.
That's awesome. So that was a new thing that we did this year to give them an extra item to do.
We weren't close to the twenty-one kids.
We just did like the special awards, those are like the first, second, like special awards. Like it's like comeback next year, science fair.
Middle schoolers, I didn't take you Christy Allen's science fair, but your first place or state?
It was really fun, we'll follow you with it next year.
I'll go down and I'll, I'll start with high school first. So we have Elizabeth Pluttrance who's over doing soccer right now. She received the dedication to science excellence, so she's been doing science fair state for six years. Then we had Justin Corrigan, they actually received two awards, Justin Walton and Corey Ball. They have the discovery in science award and they also played workplace, second place in behavioral and social sciences. And then we have Phoebe Meredith who's over doing soccer, so she's not here. She received third place in biochemistry and then also a women in engineering science award. Hattie Brewer got American Psychological Association Award. And then we have Ally Per who got third place in behavioral and social science and then also a dedication to science award. And she's been going to state science fair over six years. So those are our high school kiddos. I think they're all except for one for our middle school kiddo that's here. So we had Ashton Tibbetts and Gage Yocum, they were a team. They received honorable mention in microbiology, biomedical and health sciences. And then Team Joy DeGala and Ella Johnson received honorable mention in engineering, for engineering, energy and transportation.
No idea yet.
Mom said it to me. All right, on to announcements. George Washington Lawrence.
She's, she's not here yet.
Is he? All right, follow.
Couple things in recent weeks. I know stop and prestation, we had a first week of May and we kind of tried to partner with as many people in the community as we can. So just wanted to take an opportunity to say thank you. We had a lot of restaurants offer certain incentive availability, came in that night to cheer their knee. We had free massages come in, we had a food truck parked out in Tinverden Lot. Schoolward, you guys have brought cookies, our PTO had a nice gift for our staff. So we had a lot of different things, a lot of people were bowling, free bowling shoe rentals, free movie rentals. So a lot of different things in the community that people could go out and support our local businesses, but they're also supporting our teachers. So I thought that went really well. We had our ice cream social two Fridays ago and that went really well. I thought we had a lot of support, more like we did last year. So thank you for everybody who came in and helped. I don't think PTO is happy about that, we have some nice support there, but well attended and just another great community event. This coming Wednesday, we have our title one family night. If anybody went to our PIS kickoff beginning of the year, it's kind of formatted the same way. Where there's going to be some fun activity stations, I think they have like three or four golf houses coming in, some food. But then there's also educational stations based around literacy tied in there as well. So it was fun to kind of hold the kids in and then they're going to cheer them into some learning. So that's this Wednesday. And then Friday, we have our last trimester three awards assembly at one thirty. So if anybody come to that, we invite all of our parents, teachers, or parents of kids who get awards. So that's always pretty well attended stadium room usually. So that's this Friday. We also have coming up, all of our kids are going to the bowling alley, everybody bowl there as part of our final PIS incentives. So we're going to pass all the kids over and get bowling across Monday and Tuesday of next week. And then right this week, we are going to trial run of a new schedule for next week, or next year. We tried to, we're a little jealous of the extra intervention time that PTO school has. So we tried to see what we could do, we kind of squeezed out twenty minutes of intervention time. Our foster board, everybody in the school has time, so day and titles, special ed specials, everybody associates, everybody's available for those twenty minutes. If you really hit some interventions hard, teach kids to the level that they're at. And I think we have a system to make it work, so we're going to trial run this week. We convinced the three lunches, the two, and we're, we're working it out. So day one was today and it went pretty well for day one, so we're hopeful on that. So hopefully success next year, we can expect to help these kids.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, last Tuesday night, with the help of PTO and mainly the elected teachers, we put on a little showcase event. In the past years, they have done it in combination with a, like a band concert. This year, we chose to kind of go out on our own and do our own individual event with that. So basically, the school was open, invitations were sent out to the communities through radio, newspaper and alert messages. That come in and see all the great projects your kids have been working on throughout the year for the elected process, especially back our PIF. Along with that, through PTO, we feel okay, you know, why not make this another opportunity for fifth grade families to come in and see the building? So we sent the invitations down to George Washington and his neighborhood there to come. We did, we did take account of that and say maybe twenty families from George Washington, I know it took advantage of that. So next year, if that gets figured out, another way to get more people in. And then at Rattle Talk, I'll go do some, they could move up date coming up this week. So good events, PTO cooperated, cooperated with that, but the teachers go get, go get that, it's a good thing. Jazzman play, next year, we're going to see if we can get the choir involved in that as well, so we get all the areas music involved. Recently, our kids completed their track season and I just wanted to quickly run off a few of the top results from the conference track meet. So the seventh grade boys finished fifth overall in the conference, but we had a second place four by two team, second place red bed team in the conference, four by one second place, young man named Noah Scott was a champion shot blocker and Michael Davis Jr. is a champion long jump over the seventh grade. And I will mention as well, any seventh grade boys did win their home meet fifteen points, so seventh grade probably. Going with the girls side, in the eighth, seventh grade, the girls finished fifth as a team, but some individual accomplishments or places. Hannah Davis was the champion for discus, four by one finished fourth, Alexis Moore finished fourth in the hundred, four by two team third, Alexis Moore finished fourth in the two hundred hurdles, Madison Polly fifth in the high jump for the conference and Alexis Moore third in the long jump. On the girls side, eighth grade, we had some really good championships there. Tanya Moore, a young girl that just joined us in Chicago a couple months ago, was our champion of hundred in that hundred. Lindsay Campbell finished second in that event. Miracle Isles was champion in the four hundred as well as the high jump. Lindsay Campbell also finished second in two hundred and Lindsay won the long jump. And four by one had second and Sydney McCarron was a shot blocker champion for the conference. So I'm just mentioning those because when you're not the champion, it's kind of a big deal. And I feel like this is going to help our track program to regain some of the high school coaches work really well with middle school coaches. If you went to track practice this year, you'd see high school coaches working with middle school, middle school coaches working with high school kids, just depending on the area that they were assigned to me. So we thought they came pretty well, we moved that up, made better numbers at high school, clear as the line. I talked to the coaches about that and hopefully they might not do. And that's something that we're working with middle school coaches as they just a general expectation. If nothing else, it's getting those sporadic little bits for the end of the season. Along the way, you want to, you almost send the day of the game, some basketball school rulers or track, it's all that great, but very minimal. But let's get into cities and articles. So I said, I hope to include along with the, the agents.
We had our final choir concert of the year Thursday, we had a very nice concert. Had a lot of compliments on that. The week before, we had a band concert, same thing, we're very fortunate to have had this regardless of the time we had. It's been very fortunate to have Crystal there, receiving to have a lot of success in those two programs. So we're officially wrapped up with all of our activities for the school year track meet, so now we're starting to think about next year. We have all of our incoming fifth grade students coming over Friday to our move up day. Our high school kids, our elderly high school students, our eighth graders will go over and go to our move up day. This Friday, the nineteenth, from eight to ten, all of our teachers have activities planned to transition those students to their new classes and get some expectations and overview. We'll do the graduation parade, I know the graduates will be going around the school, we'll have a tunnel full on the back middle school sidewalk to usher them on the way to the buses that they make trips to the different schools to parade around and show their graduation status. Next Wednesday is the final day with students, we have a lot of activities planned. We're going to do an assembly in the morning with students to recognize those PIS awards and different outstanding academic, PIS awards of different classifications. And that night, we'll do our official formal awards night at I believe six o'clock that evening on Wednesday, May twenty-fourth. So we're just wrapping things up, all of our teachers are still working really hard for the, thanks to the PIS team, Barry Schiller who helps lead that up. Playing a lot of fun activity for kids that'll actually be out and around the community, support a lot of community organizations. That's bowling, going to YMCA, to set some kids to the edge, and the movie theaters will give some of that PIS money and back to the community.
And there also, we did have some fundraising that kids did. On Tuesday, we're going to have the big fundraiser where those kids who sold ten or more items, it was great afternoon, and it was called Take Blast, so these young men, Reminds, it breaks down all these, obviously house type riots and things. So you're all welcome to come back. If you're only looking at sixty-five kids who qualify, they're probably playing around three, four, five, getting their jumper on.
Well, that sounded weird.
I'd say we don't, we don't take any liability for anything, that's on you. But also the kids, some of the kids who qualify, they get the MRI, some will do, they'll be able to give prizes that are also provided this year. It's going to bring it to a good end.
So we have a recon update, YLT interview for next year's youth leadership team. We hope to have those completed by the end of this week. So we had forty-four candidates and our result was thirty-one, thirty-five have been in that group. So right now, so it's really, they're all, all the candidates, so it's up to make good decisions. The YLT members will be also involved in, as Brad said, the move up day is going to be happening this Friday. So if next year's ninth graders will come up in eighth grade and our YLT members this year, we'll be taking them around on tours of various places and what they need to know. There'll be a question answer session, they'll have a panel of students now so they can kind of get an idea of what they might want to know and be able to ask them that. They'll be able to see things like the library, guidance office, cafeteria, of course, what their freshman hallway is and what they do there and then locker rooms. So all kinds of different things that they could show up. Also, on May twenty-fourth, will be our Cape Pride Day, so that's the last day of school. We will start the day off with an assembly, an awards assembly to show, showcase all of the great things that some of our students have learned this year. We'll be collecting on next year's, I guess I should say this semester's chief of the semester as well as the chief, advising chief, maybe, at that time. And then the fun day will include games and fun, you'll have the National Guard obstacle course come in, a movie room, a game room, slip and slide. They put their way to cookout by the KFC Police Department and fire department that day. We coordinated with Mrs. Wessel on what that will look like for the students there. And then the afternoon, we're going to have, or after lunch, I should say, a concert by Tristram and Trish.
Yeah, we have another hundred dollars too, so. Pretty impressive, right? So a couple quick shout outs. Our, I, I hope you saw the news with our kids going out and building the Cape Lake in town. Oh, it's wonderful, big shout out to our industrial technology, our IJAG kids, all of them, they all came together for a common cause. And it's just awesome to see that playground finally coming up, that little playground. So if you didn't get a chance, check out our pictures on our Cape Pride page. Back Lord yet was last night and it was phenomenal. We had roughly close to fifty kids there and I just thought it was amazing ceremony, being my first one. And I'm not of my old Catholic days, but I thought it was a blowout from that. I thought they just did a great job, music and just honoring our seniors. Just a wonderful event, if you haven't been there, please check it out next, next year. Big shout out to Helen Hardcastle and Ottawa Little Church that made that happen. Our industry tour is today, we had industries from throughout Lee County come into KIC high school today. I sat down with them, I presented to them all of our programs and where we're going and we got feedback back from them. There's a couple horses that I think really fit our local needs. For instance, industrial maintenance is something we need to probably look at in the future. Speaking with Roquette and all the industries, they say it's a real starter program for our kids. So we'll look at those programs moving forward. But Dennis Frays has done a good job connecting us with industries and want to continue those partnerships. Awards night is Wednesday at six thirty. Maybe we need to coordinate that better next year, Brad, I think we're on the same night. So we're at six thirty though and it's our seniors, hopefully it doesn't equate too much.
You're this week, was you, you're next week.
Excellent, they were perfect, sorry, I didn't pick up on that, I just heard Wednesday. All right, perfect, so awards night is at six thirty on Wednesday. We'll have graduation practice and we'll be taking the kids up to Fun City for our senior day. That is on Thursday, so right after graduation practice, we're going to get in the bus and we're going to head up to Burlington and spend some hours up there. Which I thought was a really nice thing to do, last year was the YMCA, we wanted to do something a little different. Then the graduation parade is on Friday, so we'll be parading through, as Brad told you earlier. Graduation is at two PM on Sunday in the Wright Field House, so please come to honor our seniors.
Yumaya Ails Prime, she qualified in the 200 and 100. Our girls shuttle hurdles qualified with Cassidy Cobre, Elijah Elliott, Megan Geisler, and Lillian Tate. And then in our boys, our boys long jump is great intended. He really jumps farther. I watched him this year, he can jump. The 100 meter hurdle prelims will be with Lillian Tate, and then Yumaya again represents in the long jump. So we've got some kids that stayed this year for track, which is great. And then just good luck to our soccer teams, because they've had really good seasons and hopefully they can go really far in the postseason. Thank you.
Thank you.
Final push.
All right, everyone, thank you to our community. As our school and our final push, in the end of the school year, we're looking forward to the next year and moving forward. So I will address the strategic plan and our work with that, before we come to that with the whole business. Some of the things that we wrapped up is we had our final closing of the learning cycle, number four, last Friday. And so our teachers will be receiving the TLC impact survey in order to get feedback on how the TLC structure and goals correctly supported their learning and the impact upon our students. We're trying in, we moved, trying in with the work with Lee County Economic Course, Development Course. June 1st, we have a team, staff members from both the middle school and the high school that will be out and actually visiting the local industries. So working with our students and speaking one-on-one with students, they can stick directly to the environments that they're going into, the work that's involved in the learning that they need to engage in to be there. Along with that, May 22nd, Lee County Development Course is having their Developing Future Course Summit, so we have a team, everybody at KF is attending that as well. June, September 21st, and then also in June, the 14th through 16th, we have our PLC conference that's just around the corner. We have a new team from each of our schools that's moving, and I still have two slots with two more members, so let me know. All right, thank you.
You. You're on tip.
I'm on next. Hello, guys. I would like to introduce, we have member of our local Great Prairie AKA with us tonight. We have, I'm sorry, your name, I'm sorry. Sally Lindgren. Sally Lindgren. We have Dr. Angelisa Feinhardt. We have Dr. John Shungle, and Dr. Lana Anderson. And I remember presenting our work with public support, our students, our staff, and our engagement with each other. And we'll leave lights.
Please say all these words to Jerry also, so that you have a good chat. Hey, Matt, this is John Shellow. And we're going to share with you a little bit tonight about the Great Prairie ADA. I know you want to talk a little bit about the flow-through, we're going to talk about the finance within the ADA, how that works, and then we're going to have our special director, head services of media technology, share with you first of the things that we offer, and the things that your folks are participating in, which are the majority of the things that we offer. We serve about 36,000 kids in 33 public districts, and we also serve non-credited private schools. We have a total staff of about 300. One of the things that folks don't recognize, I think, sometimes is we serve kids from birth to 21. So I know when you look at your journal history, you see your flow-through, one of the things that I think sometimes people don't recognize is we serve students in early access, and we serve them through preschool. We actually have quite a few kids that go to Southeastern Union College. So from birth through 21 in the area of special education, pre-paid through 12 in the area of general education. And then we also provide the media and technology library for the area, along with some other things that Sally will talk about in a little more detail.
John.
Yes, sir.
Your 300 staff, is that full-time? And then you have part-time on top of that?
That actually is a little bit heavy. This line's old. We right now are FTEs, it's about 257 or so, and that's a combination of 1.0. Increasingly, we used to really not like to have a lot of part-time people because of the chart gets spread out. Increasingly, we have people that want to work part-time, and we're trying to get all the people we can actually, so. So yeah, that's, also, Russ, one of the things, I think I might have talked about this last year when I came down with the administrative team, but we have reductions that we have made, the majority of them have been with administrations. We've gone from nine regional directors to six, we've gone from nine buildings to five. We no longer have a building in KF, but for example, we used to have one there. All of our sites now are right on Highway 34. We go from Albee to Burlington. And you can see Great Prairie there in the southeast corner. We used to be Southern Prairie, Great River, consolidated 10 years ago, emerged. This is kind of just a quick reference on how we're funded. When you look at your flow-through, we, first of all, the history of our funding is such that in 1975, funding that went to the county superintendents was transferred by county within community college areas to an ADA. Okay? Since then, there has been a, just like school districts, you get state supplemental aid or level growth, that goes on to our special ed funding. We get some state aid, that left-hand column, and I apologize, this is small, and I will make sure Jerry gets the, 80% of what comes in from special education comes in on state aid, 20% of it comes in under property tax, and then we get our media services and special education services under property tax. The purpose of the using school, in 1975, the legislature did not want another taxing entity, they did not want someone else levying taxes in addition. So they decided to use the resident enrollment school districts to generate for each ADA and per people amount with which to build their budget. And that money comes in three separate pools. We do get some federal funds, and we also get some state categorical funding that you see on the far right-hand side. That comes directly from the state, it's for to run the shelter. We run the schools at the shelter, we run the schools in Montrose, we run the school in Mount Pleasant, Chrismore, any of the juvenile detention centers, we also hire those teachers. So we also, in that lower right-hand corner, one of the things I'd like to make sure people know is, when we get our funding, it goes to pay not only for the people that we provide to school districts and families in early access and in college, it also has to pay for all of our administrative costs. We don't have pebble, we don't have any ability to do with cash levy, we don't have any levies. So everything that comes into us is used to not only provide direct service, but also to pay for the administrative overhead of the gap. Our main priority areas, and these are far from the only ones that you'll see, but our work working primarily right now, our number one focus is early literacy. Now, obviously, Pete and Matt, when we thought that there was going to be some retention for third graders that were not proficient in reading, we still have a heavy emphasis on early literacy. When we worked before that, our core area was core standards implementation. And then we also provide the TLC supports, all the coaching networks, things that are involved, the teacher leadership, those are run through us. And then Sally will talk a little more later about 21st century learning, and Angelisa will talk about special education, and then I'll come back up and be happy to answer any questions.
I have a question, John. What is your annual question?
28 million, like that, 28.1 something like that.
And then all school districts, and we have.
Per pupil.
400.
It's 400, and it ends up being 290 for special ed, 60 for ed services, and 54 for media services. That was last year's. Will you, you generate for us about 400?
What was that, 800? Part of ADA flow-through spot, I heard, on the formula.
Okay, all right.
That's what she's, that's what I'm going to.
Okay, all right.
Because we have to prove the logic, but always be solid.
Okay, all right. It's the, the state funding that we get, 290 comes in as state aid, the rest is under property tax. Is that correct? Yeah. I'm going to have Lana, and she has to leave here in about five or six minutes, but she has kids that are tonight that are going to be recognized with an award ceremony at her school, so I'm going to have her go next. And Lana, why don't you go ahead?
I'm from services. We do with the core curriculum and the Iowa Core Standards, and our folks work with early childhood, we have early childhood consultants, literacy, math, and science consultants. We also support diverse learners. We have a DIB and ELO consultants. We do a lot with school improvement, and a lot of that work is information or directions from the Department of Education and our school consultants work with the Department of Education and then with our local school districts. And we'll talk a little bit more about that in the next slide. We support our teacher leaders, and we do a lot of work around professional learning committees. And I know that's been a big emphasis here in KF. We also hold leadership, provide leadership, professional development, and we have our curriculum and principles network, which we, curriculum directors meet monthly, and the principles network is a quarterly event. And what services has KF participated with? Well, in literacy, we have, the folks are working this year for literacy primarily in intervention, professional development, and coaching and observations around those interventions. So our district has a literacy consultant from the ADA assigned to KF, and that consultant has worked closely with your elementary principals and with Jerry. And as part of our data collection, we collect how many times we work with teachers, not only at KF, but across our ADA. And we also collect data on the number of coaching and observations we use, whether it's around the core standards or whether it's around early interventions. And so when I was looking at that data today, we know that, I can guarantee you that our literacy consultant has been working hand-in-hand with your teachers and your principals. We also, KF has done a lot of work around differentiated accountability. That professional development has come directly from the Department of Ed through our agency, and we support districts around that differentiated accountability. And that's support, that's that multi-tiered system of support. In the old days, you used to have psych visits every five years, probably some of that. And the state has moved away from that model to more of a tiered model where they call that differentiated accountability, where they're going to put more emphasis and resources in districts that need the most support according to their early literacy scores. And so we've done a lot of work with our districts around that, and KF has first created these opportunities. In math, math, our math consultants have been in the district, again focusing on internationals, and we've worked with any interventions around early A2 students, upper elementary, and in high school. We're, we have implemented transition to algebra. It's a new course that replaces pre-algebra.
We're restructuring the courses that are offered in the high school, in the math area of math, in order to bring back coherence and rigor to the math curriculum. Perfect color within the area of geometry. Is our major focus on this curriculum?
Yeah. Our pathway is currently, we're reaching all kids in geometry. So we're beginning talks with Mrs. Delk, correct? Working on a foundation for geometry, so that all students get algebra and geometry standards before they graduate, which is a state mandate, something that some kids have steered away from. So we want to make sure they all feel welcome to take those math classes.
So a lot of great work has happened in there for our children.
So why don't, why don't we hear those schools, 335 and high school?
Well, what I know from my data that I've read is we work with, directly with high school around that parents' year.
Well, we haven't brought them into S, through S for our systems, from those people. We have to get these were the areas that stood out in areas that we needed.
We just recently had one of our consultants having class around math fluency, and she had about 15, I believe, teaching teachers participate. She did that in meetings, and instead of having that in ADA, she came down, teaching a couple of classes.
Is that a class we provide, or is that the?
No, that's a class we provide, and then teachers can get recertification credit. So it was, they get a benefit, and they have to pay for that recertification.
I was going to ask, I'm a little confused. Jerry, remember what you were proposing to us, Albee side, but it was a service through ADA?
It was.
It was traditional cost.
Right, it was for the mentoring program, for TLC mentoring program with NTC, but it would be offered through the ADA.
But that wasn't.
And they're picking up, right, but they're picking up a large amount of what the total cost is, and I can verify that based upon my previous contracts with NTC, with the board. And so we would receive that at lower cost.
We pay, we pay 50,000 for that out of KF, not in districts that participate, we pay in balance. So if that is something that's not free, and it's not something that everyone does.
Is that the only thing then that they have, have we got an actual cost?
That we charge for in addition to, on a rare occasion, like for example, in August, we'll have Donovan Fisher come in, when we have national people come in, we will subsidize that also in its own seats. If somebody is saving that $10,000 or $15,000 a day, then we may pass along some cost to the districts, but only then, we don't charge for any of our services. And actually, the NTC's not our service either, so we don't play charge for our services. But we do pass along some cost when we give districts access to more national level grants. But we always subsidize, but we would import all of it. But our, but our core services, we don't sell.
What they're, I see. Yes. What they're paying for, is just the recertification? I wasn't talking about that. Okay. I was talking about something. Okay.
So as John was saying, when we have national principals, that's where we have to pass and charge to try and at least break even or a whole thousand.
Was that act or?
We try and bring a national speaker in at least once a year, and many of them twice. So for example, a consortium, a consortium of districts are coming together, and on August 22nd, KF is coming to their gig, along with about four or five other districts, and they're having their staff get to participate in professional learning. It's a solution to a speaker, and so we can talk about transforming school culture, and it was hand-in-hand with professional learning work with the district.
When is it?
August 22nd.
August 22nd.
It's Dr. DePomme.
Yes. So when the districts come together like that, we can really lower that price. So instead of having to go, you know, miles away to hear that national consultant, we can bring them in at a reasonable cost. And so we try to do that to our district. And then that consult will work with us throughout the year. We're going to bring it back at least one more time, and then we'll support it with our own votes. So you can see that KF really participates in almost everything we offer. We are either in the district with our consultant for the literacy and math, or they are coming to us for a variety of coaches' networks. Jerry participates in the Brooklyn Network, which is monthly. Adam and your elementary principals have all participated, and Brandon as well. So we've, we're very closely figured KF administration.
Good evening. I'm Sally Lindgren, Director of Technology, Media, Print Shop and Production Services of the Agency, and I'm here to just share with you some of the things that we do. Some of you might be familiar with the data system that we purchased on behalf of all the schools in our region, and that's called the Bright Bikes Data System. And what it does is a series of surveys and sort of a big data collection that provides districts an opportunity to learn about how technology is being utilized in our district, and how to support it, and the skills of the teachers, and the. And how to support it and the skills of the teachers and the skills of the students. Things like digital citizenship, access, policy, and doing all of the things in hand to really make this technology successful for students. And so you have, I believe, four data points. We've been doing that for five years, providing that service to our schools for five years. I think our consultants annually, we do that data with some of our staff. Either through curriculum or through the technology network. Our biggest need in this region is in the area of horsey communication, collaboration, creativity, critical thinking are the pillars of 21st century learning that all schools are shifting more toward. And then digital citizenship in terms of how to appropriately use that technology and still keep our kids and our information and data safe and secure. So it's a balance of those things. And so that combination then leads us to 21st century learning. And in 21st century learning, we're talking a lot about redesigning the learning space in order to enable those horsey and the use of technology to support student outcomes. So student achievement in all of the different corridors as well as the additional content areas that you have within your schools. We also work with Science Network and provide different staff-related activities in the grade of math, science, engineering, and those kind of topics into the network that supports those teachers. And that work's been primarily at the secondary level over the past two or three years. We also provide network services and into our school districts. And KIAC also has a technology director or technology coordinator. We're backing people that support North Tech people that interface with our teachers and provide the network and the technology support of your district. Integration support, in the more recent times with TLC, we see districts have technology coaches or instructional coaches that support the use of technology in schools. So we're the folks to have the seats that help give them support and training. This year we've got a much bigger school to allow to participate in a blended learning opportunity to help teachers to provide strategies to help kids learn through technology in newer ways. And then we also have media services, lending library, digital materials are probably some of the more common things that folks remember ADA support. We have media library and we have lots of materials that are checked out to our teachers. Making books, videos, could be ebooks, electronics to support the use of technology in schools as well. Various materials, posters, all kinds of different things. And then of course, a print shop and production services that make things for you. So things like school calendars and forms and tablets and pads and planners and all of those kinds of things that the ADA creates as well. So what KIAC has used in this past one year, in looking at our records and data sources. In the media library area, we have had a thousand seventy-nine logins to our media catalog, which would be checking out materials that come to our teachers and to your students in the classroom. We've had twelve hundred, over twelve hundred requests for material from the library. Print production, we've had fifty print jobs that include things like posters, student collars, business cards, PBIS, forms, and so on that have been requested from KIAC staff and student administration. Our Bright Lights data, that's a little bit short there. But George Washington Elementary and Middle School are the two buildings this year that participated in the Bright Lights data set. So that's another great thing. The set is by the way cut enough participants to actually be statistically significant. So there's some very good data points in there that we can use to build these technology cohorts. Our technology coordinators that I mentioned in the network, KIAC does participate in that support network. We do happen to provide KIAC offsite backup for your servers. And so that's just something that we provide on that. So we have a direct line to KIAC and work in office, which handles that data system for you. And then our technology coaches network, as I mentioned before, KIAC does participate in and changes training for. We provide district E-Rate support in that. E-Rate is a federal program that saves probably seventy to eighty percent of your costs towards per se and maintaining technology and connectivity to the internet and so forth. So that support, training for those applications is something that we support and work with representatives from your district to do and to help make those decisions and helping through that filing process, which is not an easy endeavor on that score. And we also provide, as you know, technical training. So we think about professional development from the ADA and the courses. We're much provided that the practical training that your techs get. This year, for example, we just completed recently the Google Surprised Administration Training. And we have provided two courses in wireless infrastructure. Because we know the online testing and all of those things that require, you know, students to be online all the time, that not only having enough bandwidth and connectivity to the internet is important, but having enough throughput is really helping to improve your performance. And what we've learned is that a lot of the wireless infrastructure that was introduced and put into a lot of our school districts years ago, really aren't up to muster up the latest standards for the type of throughput that we need. So our team and North Tech folks have been diving into those elements of wireless infrastructure that will help improve the throughput to make connectivity really, you know, to be keeping what the needs are, whether it's in terms of online testing and other uses of technology. So that's kind of been our job for you.
Okay, so the last tourist I want to talk about is around special education. So we offer early access services, which those are services provided to children birth to age three who are at risk of not being successful when they get into school. So those are services like home intervention and occupational therapy, speech services for our young kiddos. We've got school-based consultation, so for students three through twenty-one, we provide school-based teams. Those typically are made up of school psychologists, special ed consultants, or social workers. And they provide services to your special education teachers, principals, gen ed teachers to help look at quality programming and services for your special ed students. And then we also provide direct services, so speech, language therapy, occupational therapy, physical therapy, and vision and hearing. And then we have several specialty teams, like challenging behavior and autism, a special ed literacy team, and assistive tech. So we have a wide variety of services in special ed. And KIAC, you actually have over three hundred students who are being served in eight fall special education right now. Your team is made up of seven, fourteen members. So those would be the psychologists, social workers, and consultants. So you've got seven folks are serving your district. You are receiving speech services from three speech pathologists. We have occupational therapy and physical therapy to be delivered to students in your district. And you actually have a couple of students who are getting services from our teacher of the deaf and hard appearing, and a couple more getting services from orientation and mobility and our teachers of the visually impaired. So those are your specialty needs in the world of special ed. You've also used the ADA around assistive technology. We have a process where teachers can get support to identify what assistive tech students need. We also have an extensive set of assistive tech devices that are available for checkout from our lending library. So that way your teachers can try them out before you have to purchase something more permanent for a student. And then our challenging behavior and autism team has responded to several requests from the district. So those are the kids who are particularly challenging, have some significant behavioral issues or need that programming around autism support. You've also worked with our special education literacy consultants. They've done some professional development down here. Our PBIS training, your PBIS training that was mentioned quite a bit tonight, that actually comes from the ADA. We provide that training either in district or at the ADA location. You have about thirty students who are served in early access, so that's that for up to age three. They're getting home intervention. Essentially, that's a teacher who goes into the home and works with the parents around quality activities they can do with their children to help build some of those early literacy, early literacy and early writing skills. Speech and OT also provide services there. We do the hearing screenings in your building. So if you know of those or those students, like I believe it's fifth grade, you come in with our equipment and test all of your fifth graders, and they pass their hearing tests. You have a regional director of special education who's actually assigned to your district. Historically, that has been Kim Perchner, for those of you who know Kim. Next year, it will be Michelle Amherst. So we've actually been working to make that transition. And Michelle's been involved in some meetings lately with the admin team to look at special ed needs for next year. Jerry participates in the special education directors' network. So that's an opportunity for special ed leaders to comp and gain additional knowledge. And then we provide quite a bit of professional development for teachers, whether that is something like PBIS or it's onsite professional development. We're actually working today on the PEP plan for next year, which includes monthly special education professional development for your special ed teachers. So quite a bit of special ed services. Do you have questions about those? It's all very exciting. I love special ed. And then John's gonna talk about parent community engagement.
These are just available on request. We do these types of training as well. You've probably done your board community thing, maybe do Iowa School Board Association. We do have a network that your guidance people participate in. We provide for the district's national during half data. Shows you where your graduates are going. We just started to provide that last year. We purchased that on a group contract, so every high school can have that data. That shows you what your four-year high school graduates and your five-year high school graduates are doing a year later, two years later. Helps you go in and look at your antecedents, you know, how you can go through that data and see if kids have finished chapter one, what's in their post-secondary outcome. Kids who made this, what's in their post-secondary outcome. That's new. Gloria Mulunder, who actually, I believe, was there at KIAC. She's the person who's working with those guidance people. So that's a new area for us, post-secondary career readiness. You also have a couple of people that have been involved in the infancy of the career. CTE, Career Technical Education, Regional Planning partnership. Jeremy's been there, and your industrial technology teacher is Mr. May.
Yes.
Mr. May has also been really helpful on that with community college, the ADA, community college combined with that regional planning partnership. So as far as funding goes, because I know that's, you know, I know that's an issue for you. You know, the four hundred or so, the two ninety, the fifty and sixty make up that school foundation aid formula. Everything up there combined comes to us on your per pupil. So if that's nine hundred bucks times what eighteen hundred is, is probably your total at each September. You know, what I'd say to folks is this, I guess. First of all, I know people don't like to hear this. It's a mechanism that was established forty years ago to make sure that the ADA's were proportionally funded. It was never a situation where school districts would give them money and then ask to give that money to the ADA's. The flow-through is a journal entry. So if we have a small, there are going to be, in all transparencies, there are going to be some years where you really did your money's worth. And there are going to be other years where you don't get your money's worth as much. If we have a smaller district that has four, five kids move in or suddenly has a high density of very high-cost kids, they are going to get the services that the kids need, just like your kids will get the services that the kids need. And they can kind of go up and down, you know, in terms of, you know, that's why we don't come in and say, you know, here's how much money we spent at KIAC this year. Because it differs from year to year. My personal belief is, and I've been a superintendent of small and large district. I've been a superintendent since I asked about ADA flow-through when I was at Hartland. I believe that we provide equity for all the kids in the state of Iowa. I appreciate that a lot of those, a lot of those resources come to us based on your resident enrollment. And I understand that when you see those journal entries come in and go out, it's a pretty good size check of money. We are a service agency. We do work with school districts. But we are always willing to sit down, and we do this quite frequently, I think, if you talk to a lot of folks in your educational communities. We always are ready to try to help you meet your needs. If there are things that you're struggling with, or things that you feel like you need more help with, I tell our people all the time, they should be saying words to the ADA. I think that's a very legitimate question. You have the same right and access to get the resources or services that you need as everyone else. The, I guess that's about all I could, all I could say. I'd be happy to answer any other questions. Do you have any comeback? If you have to send a CFO down here to talk or to ask further questions? If you want more detailed financial information, would be happy to send that person down to take you through exactly how the funding works. We're happy to try to do that. And you have to answer any questions then. Thanks for having us.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
So, you know, I'm still the state service director for the district. And as state service director, we're always looking for ways to improve the life program and make sure that our students have the same nutritious taste and ability. However, we see a lot of light waste and we'll go back and we'll look at baby development, recipe development, and we'll look at how much time they have. But we'll put a lot of factors, one of the interesting things that I see pop up again and again is this recessed porridge that we're spending on it. So last fall, I talked to Ms. Schiller, and I said, do you have any students that would want to talk to us? And she was like, I think I have one. So it's Angie's meeting, Addie Brewer. Addie jumped right in. She worked really great with our board of staff and administration, and she got the data. She did a really great job of this. She won first place at the Overstock Science Fair, the behavioral science category. She won the Allen B. Adams Special Merit Award at Eastern Iowa Science and Hearing Fair. She won the American Psychological Association Award at the Iowa State Science Fair. Addie is a senior here at KHS, faculty member of the special needs. Member of the special needs, KIAC sister cities, and has participated in VAD and SHOVR for two years. I asked her to come speak as they shared results of her setting, although they were really interesting. And let's hear it, so.
For my science project, I went to George Washington for two days for two weeks and observed the fork of their lunches. I wanted to see how much food was wasted and if it had a correlation with what time it had recessed. I measured how much food was wasted by a number system, with one being that the child hardly ate anything on their tray, and a five being that they ate everything on their tray. And I had thought that they would eat a lot more food if they played first than they did on their morning. Right now, kids are given three minutes to eat their lunch, and every set's directly after lunch. I saw a very large amount of food wasted every single day. And by the time that every child was served, it would be like eleven-ten. And then they would start to dismiss the first table at eleven-seventeen. So even though the last kid that sat down isn't going to be the first to throw away their food, I think that seeing their friends going out and playing makes them even more like piped up for recess and not focused on eating. And also, when I would sit by the trash cans and report how much food was wasted, almost every single kid would run by and eat so they could go outside and play and then go dig. So for my experiment, I asked Mrs. Dean's class if they would be willing to have recesses before lunch one day. And they did that. And her class ate significantly more food than the rest of the kids that lunch. Her class had basically fives and more, so they ate everything on their tray. And all the rest of the kids in lunchrooms had threes and ones. So there was a little bit of food wasted that day. Here's my data. What I did is I added up all of the kids' trays, their averages, and then I averaged that number out. So this graph really just shows variation of how much food is wasted every day based on what they're served. And this graph shows the difference between how much food is consumed. So for the graph on the bar on the left, it's when recess is before lunch, kids ate over half of the food. And when recess is after lunch, kids ate well under half of the food. the food. So there's a pretty big difference of what time recess was. Many schools have made the change to have their recess before lunch, and have always made food intake more lax. A school in Montana implemented a recess before lunch policy, and teachers at the school noticed that the kids were more settled, and they'd go back to their classroom after lunch, invite to their classes, because they were just coming from the lunchroom, not recess, but they were all piped up and excited. And there was also a decrease in food and milk weights, and kids acted more quieter in lunchroom and were actually eating the food after coming in. Some more studies show that fifty, fifty-four percent more fruit and vegetables at lunch were eaten when they had recess first. And researchers also think that playing first is humbler, and when recess is first, kids are less likely to race through lunch in order to have more time to play with their friends. And so overall, it's about a twenty-nine percent difference. And I got this from myself, bringing down the first seed. That's basically it. I thought it was very cool that I found the same data that these, they give us these in, so it's interesting.
That's very cool. Yeah, thank you.
I said it.
What do you think, Mr. Martin?
I just switched the schedule, just this week. Let me get this settled first, without even talking about it. No, very interesting.
Mike, just tell me they call them over and supervise recess.
Yeah, exactly.
Sign them all up.
Yeah, supervisors, supervisors, recess? We need supervision.
All right, onto the strategic goal.
I would like to thank you for those strategic goals, since we definitely have really given our team great focus in regards to our work and action steps going forward. Our district instructional leadership team consists of our admin and our core instructional coaches, have really dug into those. We're going to be meeting again next week, I believe, Thursday, to determine what the , what called the goal, which are the things that we can usually take action on and have impact, but also prioritize, right? Now, we have action plans for each goal, broken down into objectives and steps, but we need to prioritize what is most important, what's going to have the greatest impact, so we can make our plans going forward. These action plans are going to be utilized with our TLC conference that we're attending, and then within our building instructional leadership team, to bring this into their buildings, how does this look at building level. From this, we've developed a system for communication, and for each charter, but it really shows the district instructional leadership team, and we're going to be bringing in a new TLC position, a building instructional leadership team member, TLT, which will therefore be a part of the committees for each of those strategic goals, and have that work, district level work, and then bring it back to their buildings, and their building instructional teams, and then into the individual TLCs by grade level and content area. So the, the structure and the flow of communication, planning, and implementation is a cyclical cycle, it's not going to be just up-down. We're able to hear the voices of our teachers as well, because that is where the word is really happening, and we need to know what strategic systems are missing and what's flowing down. So yes, there we are. We will continue to work on this, and we should pass a draft, draft, draft. Refine will look more, or you bring it to you to look at yourself, hopefully, and hoping towards June, because then we would like our administrators, our K and L team, our instructional coaches to also take that to their buildings, and we can work there. So if I did write communication wise, and focus, please, to drive over.
All right, elements of student handbook.
Yeah, really no changes from the last time, other than we took that first paragraph out, that's it.
Okay. All right, do we need to vote on this? All right, I need a motion to accept any of those. Is that in? Is there any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye. All right, middle school handbook.
The handbook issue is going to be completely electronic, so it'll look a little different than what you have printed out, things just don't line up quite the way they would look electronically. Really what we've changed is condensed a lot of things, it's going to be electronic, we've put in links to different board policies in place where teachers can find things quickly. We added some of our grading adjustments, grading practices adjustments, and some of our tweets from our student handbook. So, oh, it's not a lot different, just condensed a lot, made the formatting look cleaner, made it all electronic.
Well, they still be able to get access to part, huh? Parents or?
This, the staff.
Oh, okay.
Yes, parent handbook, we provide that to all parents.
All right, all the written information, things like that. So, all right, all right, discussion. All in favor? All right, Mr. Callan.
Okay, school calendar, we mentioned, we can practice our attention, but school conferences type semester fell on Monday, Thursday. So in respect of our families, we had to move that, that would be Wednesday, Wednesdays are not touched. So parent teacher conferences, from which that Tuesday, thus, spring break was shuffled back and adjusted. Other shifts were in order, we really truly believe that all staff should be at the opening celebration beginning of the school year on August seventeenth. So there's a shift in our associate stays, which they will leave with us on the seventeenth, and then come back on the twenty-third, so they have a new staff celebration, but also they have school preparation for the new day. Something to consider that we have heard also is the number of days versus semester to second semester are really lopsided. The issue is, you cannot start before August twenty-third, current state, but if they're going to have this semester end before winter break, they're already have a lopsided day. So that's something to consider as we work on the calendar earlier next year, to address that and look at how can we balance, because when we have certain portions that are semester-long, they are shortened, in what they can really dig into in depth with their students versus second semester, they, it just doesn't create a whole basis for learning for our students.
It wasn't that many years ago that we finished right before one of the thirteen-day that was the semester.
That's what I've been used to, but I'm just sharing about not previous years calendars, and why is that?
There's, there's. Do you remember when we did that?
It hasn't been that long. It's been this way since I've been at the high school.
Teachers really wanted to finish at the winter break, because it just was a cleaner break for starting classes, that's what came down. It's our first, my first year, thirteen, fourteen, I believe, we started doing that. A survey that we sent out, and that's what the results were.
Sounds is something we need to look at next year, because we have drummers that are coming up again, and everybody's like, sure. I open them, they charge it to, it's only the highest one, or eighty-five, eighty-one.
And that time, we also, and other schools, including other states, have a lot of who do that same thing.
Right, they cut off the Friday before, that's what's reserved.
Yeah, and also it's something to do with colleges, with the number of classes we offer, a lot, I think, a lot of their classes are done at that time.
So in a sense, we're kind of rock and hard, because the state says you can't start before the twenty-third, and we want to make it. But again, I, I'm going to mention, as we plan for more, bring more people to the table just to get more input, and that was my question.
Exactly, who sits down to?
Yeah, it was Heidi and I, with the district, Heidi and I, district side, and my, Myra, and then Melbo for the teachers. And I brought it to, because I'm the district side, to our administrative team to review and vet. I don't know that.
Having a question, they face, I told them, when they get their place.
Oh, we've looked at it a number of times during our admin meetings, and.
But it was before the first review started working.
Probably around about that time, did you write out?
Yeah, when it had started, and then.
Well, you see, I couldn't agree.
When we first started, like, really.
Looking at, really, not even fault.
You know, first of town over here. Wouldn't you think we could have bested that, and we go earlier?
What do you, in regards to creating calendars? Yeah, we can start, I mean, I can start that, you know, beginning of the school year, early summer.
Or maybe that there was a problem, when you have to change, so they, the school would, okay.
I agree, but I'm also stating that we need to have more voices from our teachers in regards to the development of the calendar, I don't feel that there was, or there, like it should have.
That, that could be done.
So that is something that I am addressing going forward.
Also, I guess we need to improve the regards. So, any more? Okay, is there any more comments? I agree, we should start. All right, all in favor, say aye. All right.
Good evening, my name is Bob Gorgian, and I represent the Trinity Baptist Church here in town. And last, I think this is our twelfth annual year, we've done the back of school celebration with donations of the backpacks, with supplies and everything. This is the third year that we partnered up with United Way, and when the church did itself, we're doing about a hundred, ten, twenty-five backpacks ourselves, and we partnered up with United Way. We, I think the first year, we did like six, seven, six point seven, last year we did eight hundred point nine backpacks, so we gave away to the community on that purpose. So we've really upped that number of backpacks, and we're glad to do that, we do a lot of behind-the-scenes work to work out, do that, we try to get a word with the community-wide involvement with United Way, and so they, she passed out there as kind of our end-of-year palette of all the churches involved, of community processes involved, and so that's what we're here to tonight, to talk about trying to do it again this year. We're actually going to do a little bit changing, we're actually going to begin on Saturday this year, see how it comes along. It's a little easier to get following here on Saturday as opposed to late Friday afternoon, so that's just seeing how it works, we're going to go from like maybe three on Saturday to five, that's, they have to do it every year, sign up for your, fuck, they're the kids have their sign-up day, so we can promote it at that, and follow up over there, sort of the next day. And I will get the letter to Heidi here, probably next couple of weeks, the information to use the parking lot facility, we'll walk across the triangle, try to get the helicopter to come down, we can, we'll land it out there, triangle park, and just get a couple paperwork permission, and that, so that's what we're here for, guys. This, for example, I'll turn it over to, who cares there?
Good evening, I'm Sue from Chastain, I'm with United Way.
I'm Jack Lancy, and I'm with United Way as well. So last year, we're also asking if the Kiantuck School Foundation would consider supporting the event. Last year, there was a pledge of five hundred dollars towards the event, so we're asking for that support again. As you can see by the report in front of you, we had lots of great community support. One other, another key reason for the partnership is that we don't have multiple events happening in the community at one time, pulling everybody together, pulling resources together to have this huge event. I also want to thank, also recognize all the volunteering that happened for this event. I see several volunteers around the table who opted out, but if you can look, we had ninety-two volunteers help with packing and putting on the event, and the report shows the total number of hours, as well as the dollar amount of folks donating their time. So we ask for your support, save the date, it's written on the bottom, and the flyer will be out soon. We'll also be contacting the school system to get the list of supplies as early, as early, as early as possible. We don't fill the backpacks with everything on the list, but we at least try to pick up some of those key things that is helpful for, for kids. So we are targeting a thousand backpacks this year, and we'll be pre-K through eighth, and also high school students, and others, well, personal things that we'll have for them. So we ask for support as a, as a school, and just thank you again for all the folks that volunteer. And if you'd like to sign up to volunteer, I'll take your hat.
Two things. One, I think our supply list is our, what's saying here, right? Might be revised a little here and there, or each time a red envelope comes, but so that's there, and we're usually, we're having changes. And if you were asking the school foundation for money, you'll have to get a little far.
Okay, okay.
Our last meeting until September was this past Tuesday.
Oh, okay.
So, yes.
Contact her.
Yes, so contact her, and she'll just call another meeting either now or before you've meet it, right? But you have, they don't meet during September.
During the summer, I see.
Yeah, June, July, August.
Two, so it's.
It's always the second Tuesday.
Okay.
This has been such a wonderful success, and all of you worked so hard, your kids deserve it, too, so.
Always.
You can't thank you enough, so.
Yes, and it's a truly a community-wide effort, the volunteers and all the different support, and, and, but Trinity is continuing to host at the locations.
Great, thank you. Graduation presentation.
So.
Okay, all right, yeah, I will entertain a motion to approve this for using the law. So we do this on the, all right, no discussion? All in favor, say aye. All right.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, we finished our finals today, got our grades stored, and we're happy to announce that we'll have one of the highest classes we've had in a long time, according to what I know, and Janice is a pretty good resource on that, the high school, roughly a little over one hundred and fifty students graduating this Sunday, so you have a list there, and I'd like to recommend it. We're very excited about our class, and wish more luck, so.
All right. Any discussions?
Chief, this is, this is terrible, guys. And I would like to just, you know, to, 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 to.
So, because I have it.
Okay, because I missed it, I need now, every now and then, people, you might, you know, I guess, but.
Yeah, you know which one, Julie. I don't know which one, is it the two? It's two, okay, all right. Julie noted. We just stored them tonight, so you've not got the list.
Okay. I mean, if she knows, she'll sort it out between all of us.
Yeah, she's, oh, you're talking about, we're announcing.
We're coming, I'm telling us.
Got you.
You're running.
Don't worry, Mary.
Set it on the alphabet, the.
She'll be all over that, I'll let her know. Yeah, yep. Okay.
All right, all in favor, say aye. All right, summer school algebra extension class.
Sure. I have Mrs. Jennings with us tonight, so we're kicking around the idea of using some average money to bring in some of our students that are out of borderline. As you know, October is a parent foundational course, their freshman year, Mrs. Jennings is willing to use a couple of weeks this summer to work with our students and make sure that they hit the standards that they need, based off of their finals, and whatever else you missed in class, we're a lot talking for you, that's okay?
Yeah, that's very good.
If I'm missing something, we know. So just reloop some of those standards and continue an extension on, so that our students are prepped and ready for geometry next year. And we're trying to avoid, have, you know, our borderline of bubble kids that don't make it, having to take a whole semester over, which is really just a standard to the business. So Mrs. Jennings always works very hard after school with our students and advisory, does a wonderful job, but, you know, we had a few fall off towards the end, and she's hoping that she can, we're going to wait to see, we're going to send a letter and see what interest we can get, but if we give roughly eight to ten kids, and it's worth our time, she would like to have an extension of two weeks in summer to work with those students.
Would you want me to do it right now?
Well, I was thinking, we, we come back that Tuesday, you know, after Memorial Day, the teacher's student, I just thought to jump right in and not really take too much of all, and I would approach it as, we're just going to freeze your grade where it is, and we'll work on what you need to work on based on your final, and then give them the, another assessment of sorts after that two week, I was just thinking, two weeks, not too long to get them crazy, two hours a day. And it'd be voluntary, but their alternative is, if they end up failing the class, if I take their grade, they'll have to take an entire semester of Algebra I over again. I'm trying to offer an alternative where, you know, we're going to focus just on where their needs are, instead of taking the whole course, the whole second semester, so.
So a student could say, no, I'm not, you know, I have no, well, it sounds like a good deal to me. And so, you know, I'll make personal contact with parents and we'll send the letter and I'll make the call.
Well, and something else we talked about is there's a large gap there from them taking the second semester all the way through some of their first semester and getting into that second semester. That's like a nine-month gap almost that we're trying to, you know, we want to get moved on to geometry.
And the students recognize that, you know, I'm talking today, because of course now everybody's in panic, you know, like I'm going to fail, because it's last week, but there, I said, well, you know, your alternative is, I didn't, I hadn't said anything about this because I didn't know if we're going to do it. But, you know, they're talking about taking algebra over the second semester, and kids were saying like, well, that will be terrible, we'll have a whole semester off and then we'll have to start with second semester, we won't know what we did. And I said, yes, I know, that'd be a problem, you know, so they get it. And some of them, it's just a matter of, they, for some of them, they just don't get it until the end that this matters. And that, and F means they're going to repeat the course. And so now, since it's a parent situation, I'm sitting at a fifty-eight percent, oh my goodness, now what am I going to do?
How many of you qualify?
Oh, I, I probably, see, I'm not talking about the students that are sitting at twenty percent. I'm not talking about the kids who really just cool off the entire semester. I'm talking about fifteen of them that would qualify, that would really benefit from an intense two weeks, more of a focus on individual things. Like they all need everything, they just all need something. I thought if we had takers, we'd do it. No one wants to do it, then I guess, I feel like I offered it at least and then, yeah, I know, that's what I figured. See, I'll time it so they go right to lunch.
We plan on having that lunch.
Yeah, well, yeah, we'll do that.
Well, and we want to make sure, we know with our percentage of interventions, our target is to be aggressive in their ways and things, to really keep them on task for their graduation rates and everything, it's all reciprocal.
Well, we want them to be successful in geometry. Algebra is a tough, it's a tough thing for students to realize that they really have to put their nose to the grindstone, do a little bit of work to make it through the course. And, and then if they fail algebra, then they don't get too fired up for any of the math after that. So if we can get them thinking positive about this first course, then perhaps after that, just their confidence level and their mental state, their attitudes will be better.
I'd entertain a motion to allow this to happen. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Thank you.
All right, security cam quote.
Okay, so in your packet, there was some conversation between some admin and they wanted some additional cameras installed to a launch current security system that we have. One in particular, of course, which we look, which is going to be the majority of the quote, will be to install camera in the high school parking lot, obviously being a little bit farther away from the apartment, but obviously it increases the cost and you just roll the highway around. But we still feel that it would be appropriate and well-certained purpose to help reduce other situations that, however, you speak, speak about.
I can definitely speak about it. Yeah, we've, I don't want to get too graphic, but we definitely had some vandalism. We had a hit and run this year. We also had a student take off another student's car. All been handled by the police, but our hit and run wasn't, we didn't have cameras out there. We also, we have loitering in the parking lot very late at night, different things. There's a lot of shenanigans in our parking lot, just to say nicely. Not, not a bad thing on a regular basis, but we do have issues. If there was ever a need for a camera system, it would really need it in that parking lot. In fact, I addressed the teachers today, giving the parking lot a model, talked to them and just got to warn them, yes, we are, you know, that is a thought, we were thinking of putting cameras in there and, and sign parking so we can better control our parking lot. Because when a kid comes in crying and the car hit, we don't have it, we don't know who was parking that day and that car's already gone and it's just really, really hard to police that. So hopefully we do a better job protecting our students. Even as they're getting licenses, coming out of parking, who knows, it's a very dangerous place for kids to drive all over the place, I think it's more than half a month.
And then you can see there's just some additional ones at high school, just to give areas that don't have coverage, camera, they probably should have. So we'd just like to ask the board if they would approve this call. The bottom was stretched out. The bottom was stretched out, we actually think, we have something that we'd like to try first, it wasn't popular in, when, when their parking lots, when, when they came and we looked at the situation, we think that we could bring it around. One of the cameras we currently have, we'd like to try that first, before we went and sprang. So hopefully it doesn't come back and it's all their issue, but.
All right. I entertain a motion to accept. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Okay, first reading, fourth policy, second one, fourth, third charge policy.
So if you all have received the information about legal policies, I guess you can certainly have any questions on that. It's kind of a, it's really difficult policy, I just, it's kind of not, not any events or how do we do it and parents don't pay. It really isn't for some, I feel like, people, here I have to learn the care of, in the several students, and also here's some control, that we need the right service and the member to be financially responsible, actually, I think. And right now, we're all kind of in the same spot, because before you could kind of do what you wanted to do, and now for July, first we have to have a policy, so a lot of districts are kind of, we're all looking to each other to see what everybody else is doing. So there are, there are districts that have consolidated policies, this one I actually used one, every day at school, I would put their policy, kind of use theirs for classes, checklists, and kind of put ones in others, we have those stuff. And I believe, Sarah, this is a requirement now of federal program, so we're going to continue to get, or certain, we have to have this in here, that does support a lot of our students, so this is very important to keep in place. You know, some things, of course, just, just to kind of get you guys thinking, as well as the things that we'll need to be thinking about as well, is if the district is going to start pursuing credit club, or credit agency for unfluctual accounts that we've tried and tried and tried and can't provide, that maybe students that are, students that are in our, within our district still, or maybe some that have left, who left us with that. And that, again, we've seen this, we've had our sixty-dollar allowance that we called, we've always had just the grab, but you know, hold his own wonderfully, close to six hundred dollars that I kind of keep, always chased down into an application back home, then now they're free, so getting that money back, that's really possible to, you know, to use. And then also, I'm not sure this is or not, the other thing that will probably be addressed, that will leave your mind, but also to deal with adult balances that are needed, because we do have some that are, that our staff, they are also needed. So, so we're just, want to kind of put this in that we continue to. We, we cannot, we can't, we cannot, we can't, we can't help it. Right. Everyone has a deny a staff member or other, everyone's right here, we're just saying, especially saying that we're already, like, maybe, you know, ahead of time, we've tried.
I was sixteen and old this week, I couldn't tell. Well, my daughter eats two, we have a family plan, so I never know when she's eating hot lunch. I took care of it though.
But there are just some things in place that we, it's important to put in place as well. I do have some information on some collection agencies, so I would bring you those to board as well. But there's a whole set of rules that we have to be, how to put this place as well. And if you have the balance, you can graduate without paying. You cannot, wait, I understand, I could be wrong, but we cannot withhold or follow that they may not participate in the graduation activities, so walking the stage and, and from this, that's pretty much our only catch right now. So it's a lot of the high school, actually, but a lot of them will transfer out, or it may not. May is school board recognition, that's what we have, okay, for the school district, our staff, our community and our students, we'd like to take that and, and we should want to do your donations for it. So Jane? And now, behalf of our community and our students, staff, and the faculty. Yes, it was discussed in, I think, in regards to Wednesdays, on Wednesday student days, that the associates could be like out one hour earlier, they could work a seven-hour day, every day. And when they, we let out on Wednesdays for the PLC, I think some of the associates weren't always as involved in PLCs as, it was varied for different, but it was seen as a budget cut, as a way to reduce, help reduce special debt deficit, I believe it was like twenty-four thousand dollars, twenty-four, thirty-three thousand, I can't remember what it was, but around there that we could save, which is a little bit additional to, to help reduce our special deficit. So we just need approval from the board to actually reduce them from basically thirty-five hours a week to thirty-four hours a week, and that one hour being on, this is for Wednesdays, on student days.
Okay, can I take a motion?
Discussion? I echo what she said and Janus spoke to all the associates who had that meeting and the value of the meetings, just to bring through and reduce the budget for that, talk about the temperature here a little bit too, try to quiet everything possible to reduce, which saves teachers and associates and classmates.
And at this time, all of the associates are special ed associates with student time, so the students aren't there, so. All right, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Public hearing.
Okay, so at this time, we'll open the public hearing to see if there are any comments specifically related to the budget amendment for the back of school year, two thousand seventeen. Right. Okay, so seeing no comments, we will close the public hearing. Then I'll just move right on into aye. You are proposing a budget amendment for the fiscal year two thousand seventeen, just to reiterate that this doesn't increase property taxes or anything, this is specifically asking that we potentially might spend more than what we originally planned, and this is directly related to the fact that we have insurance claim on the roofs. So obviously we'll be getting the funds in and they're going to be flowing out, but as they flow out, depending on the time, we could potentially have thrown this over the amount that we actually published, which was our budget a year ago for this, so we are proposing this budget amendment so that we don't get an aye, because aye, which is going over our budget.
All right, I would like to accept this. Any more discussion? All in favor, aye. All right. Middle school intercom system.
Okay, so we had another claim that happened during a storm that we had in the spring, and we actually had a lightning strike that damaged some of our lights and damaged the middle school intercom system. We do have a proposal, this is a proposal that the insurance company is going to, because the, our insurance company is placed back to you, is working, so this is a proposal that they will actually cover. We did try to get two proposals, but the other proposal was worth three thousand dollars. So the insurance company sent this from this session, we can at least get the second one, because I believe this one is around fifty-two thousand. So we just need the board to approve this quote so that we can continue with this process and I guess the insurance company will cover this as well.
All right, can I motion to accept this insurance claim? Any discussion? I want to know how you communicate.
Carry your finger.
We've got creative, we've got an app on our smartphones that we can communicate through with, you know, see your finger.
Another thing, we have strings we can't dance.
All in favor, say aye. All right, public hearing is on practice facility.
Okay, so at this time, we'll open the public hearing for bids on the practice facility for any comments like you do. Okay, so seeing none of comments, we'll go ahead and close our public hearing. And then the next thing on the list, of course, is the acceptance of the practice facility bids. As you can see, I gave you a sheet, or actually I did, and Martin did over there, gave you a sheet of the two bids that we did receive from the practice facility. We have contractors at five hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars, and, I'm not sure how you say the next one, I don't want to.
I had to ask two, Shosse and Wardies is from therapy, I think, the second bid.
Okay, and their bid was for five hundred and eighty-one thousand, six hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. At this time, if you guys would like to accept any bids or not, this is the time. I would like to make a question to you.
All in favor, or any discussion?
Anybody? The discussion would center around, it came in a lot higher than previous bids, especially with concrete, and I think some of the people made a little time to open it.
We would like to, yeah, kind of, get a little more information on some of the areas. So, the grant, because this is really directly, we're.
Yes. All right, all in favor, table, say aye. Donation. All right, next discussion.
We did receive a. Okay, so we did receive a check in the amount of three thousand dollars for the Billy Bros of Eastern Iowa, and we just have to bring it to the board to accept that, and it's obviously related to the national tech program, and we think Matt, he works really hard on the Rose Program, and he pays a lot of. and gets a lot of donations, so just ask the board to accept the donation.
I entertain a motion to accept. Any discussion? Great, all right, all in favor, say aye. Any word temperatures?
We would like to, we try to save money where possible, and maybe, we were in the fight ants with budget discussions. We were looking at reducing staff, and we had an area here worth of $4 or $5 million, and there had been reductions from there again, and they came up with some. And then we had done a study, I'm gonna say 10 years ago, about wanting to raise the air conditioning temperature by a degree or two, and lowering the amount of energy usage, both winter and summer. And we thought we could save $10,000, and that was before we air-conditioned more of our schools, and before the energy prices have all gone up. So we're thinking that we may be able to potentially save $20,000 by varying that a few degrees. And also, we talked about, and I'm looking at Aaron for anything else, because Aaron had talked on this, also, we had some discussions on this, and we're looking at raising the temperature during the summer in unoccupied buildings, higher than what we've had in the past. We will keep it lower when the summer cleaning crews are in there, because when they're washing the floors with their machines, we need their water to evaporate, so they can put wax on them. We need the wax to dry, so they can give it their second, third coats. And then after they get the moisture out of the building from doing that and move on, we want to raise that temperature up several degrees from what it has been. And that is going to be 78, 80 degrees. We're also following somewhat of a guide the state has put out, and the state is doing in all of their buildings, beginning when, they've already started that process. I think. And so, we're gonna use some of their guides on doing that, and still try to be manageable, still try to be comfortable. And we're, it'll take some adjustments as they go through it, because the first time they, say, raise the temperature on the air conditioning from 70 to 72, or 71 to 73, all buildings face differently toward the sun, and you're going to have to adjust those controls, as they are right now, as they've been for the past couple of years. If you look on the computer that they keep track of that with, it varies. Side of the building, north, south, east, west, full sun, whether they have shade trees or not, because they have to apply more pressure in some areas in order to keep it comfortable. So we will be changing that to a couple of degrees while students are occupying the building and staff. And when it's unoccupied, we will be lowering that in the winter and raising it in the summer, in an effort to save dollars toward the classrooms. So, questions on it? It's not an action I have.
I'd pinpoint a couple of things at the high school, where we're around, so I think we can pinpoint like a room or two, can you? For our main office area, like...
Yes, you can do that, and you can do A wing, your science wing. But one of the things that we would want to do, when Aaron and I were talking, is if you have, like, we had summer school last year through the range.
Sure.
And they were in different locations, like, some were in the science wing, and some chose to be in the A wing.
Some of them.
We might want those all in the A wing, even though you can cool one room in your A wing on any floor you want to do. But if we consolidate that, it just makes common sense, let's save a little bit more, it'll also save traffic, you'll know where people are located. And just like we've talked about, you have the summer lunch program.
Right.
So, you know, that room will, of course, be cooled during the time it needs to be. We've talked about basketball practice, we've talked in the winter in the restroom room, we've talked about in the summer, raising the temperature of the gym. Hopefully, we have little kids' basketball pants, cheerleading, little feathers, things, we'll make common sense adjustments.
Gotcha.
Okay, thank you. And Aaron also said, just to pass on to some of the coaches, they worked with him real well in the past, letting them know, like in the restroom room, the example was given, letting them know what time practice starts, when it will be over, communicating with Tommy how many hours ahead of time they needed to come up, instead of last minute, so it's nice and warm, so they work with the sweat in their head.
Right.
So we'll continue doing all that stuff, we're just going to watch it closely.
Any more discussion? All right, on to board members' cards. I put this on here because we have members who are out of town, or who work late, who need to come into this building to pick up their four packets, which is always a different place, which we like to pick up and read them four times. So I know Jane has a pass card.
And it took me six months to get it. So, but when we, for the rest of you, I hope we'll take them off. But it's really necessary, because it's time to work, to get the materials, to just go out.
I've also checked other schools, and the majority have, if they don't have a part access, they have a key. So it is indeed that other schools aren't.
I know personally, it's hard for me to get over there before the staff leaves. Going around the building, knocking on windows, trying to find somebody to let me in, so...
Well, and they do a great job of watching for a certain day, but you know every moment that they have to go to the bathroom, or they have a meeting, and they might be a little short in the winter. There's getting out there, waiting and trying to get attention, and it's just not necessary.
Is this specifically asking just for the spelling program, something for the board? Yeah, I've seen it up on the front row.
I mean, it worked.
So I don't know if we can launch it, or if it's still working.
All right.
Or do, or do, so it doesn't come up again and again.
I think, I don't think it's... I had a hand for a little bit. She just said that she always advise that board members are getting access to school to the same extent as any member of the board. We do have a board policy, and she gets the more detail on all four that's the board. So you have, she didn't reference our board policy that actually states in a policy 10, 1005.1, the policy states that any person other than employees or students are considered visitors unless under the principal or president's permission. So she just wanted to make sure that that board policy's...
I think it's a need to promote our identity here, for here. So would we pass it now, or would we try to, would that take the board policy or in another area?
That's a decision.
Yeah, yeah, so the purpose, I mean, if you guys are coming in for the purpose of, yeah, I mean, if your access would be to those personal, to gauge a board package, sort of the purpose.
Well, it's true, coming into fighting, it's me, to check with you.
So that's related to board business, not related to...
Well, even if there's times when the people are here, is there a way, or so much out there? But I just think this is a service to these people, and I have to see the access to this, to all of this. First, the thing with board policy. Oh, you're running out of time, Brad, so you should take it. And you will make a, maybe a question here.
Is there any more discussion? It's a form of course now. We have a day was in front of us.
Yes, there should be a game line here, in all your...
So I would, I can't imagine to accept this, all this, and I could... So, is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye. All right, a motion to adjourn? All in favor?